I believe the only one that wasn't in attendance that evening, Mr. Talbot. That's right. Okay, so I will look for a motion to approve the minutes of September 26th, please. Mrs. Burns, thank you, seconded by Mrs. Bryson, thank you, all those in favor. We've got four with one abstention. Cam, thank you. All right, the next few items, we have warrants. We have G406, R209, and R210. The local 17, 18, 19, and food service 07. Could I have a motion to approve those warrants, please? Mrs. Bryson, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse, thank you, all those in favor. That would be five, please, thank you. And then we have the payroll warrant for weekending October 10th. That would be timely. Excellent. Could I have a motion to approve the payroll warrant, please? Mr. Talbot, thank you, seconded, Mrs. Burns, thank you, all those in favor. That would be all members present. Thank you. And the last warrant item we have this evening is a circuit breaker 02. Could I have a motion to approve? Mrs. Bryson, thank you, seconded, Mr. Talbot, thank you, all those in favor. We've got four with one abstention. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Brandt, please.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. It is with pleasure that I share with you information around two items that's included in this meeting's packet. The first item has to do with our district priorities, and so I'll take a minute to talk to this. As members of the committee and hopefully the community are aware, right now as a school district, we are somewhat in between strategic plans. And I say that for the primary reason being that the previous district's strategic plan came to an end at the conclusion of last school year, so in June of 2018. And so I certainly appreciate the opportunity, as the incoming superintendent, to have the chance to work with our district staff and our community and our parents and guardians throughout Wilmington, to take stock of where we're at as a school system and to build the next strategic plan going forward. With that said, it's also understood that there are a number of, what I've termed priorities, that loom before us for this current 2018-2019 school year. And so in no way am I suggesting that this represents a mini strategic plan per se, but it certainly does, I feel, capture those things that seem to be most important for us as a district to attend to, of course, in addition to the ongoing work that takes place around our classrooms and schools each and every day. So if I may, just an opportunity to provide the committee and the community with an update on what these are. And I should point out, for those that are watching, that this work emanated from discussions over the course of the summer and into the very beginning of the school year with the district leadership team. The district leadership team is comprised of our school principals, as well as central office administrators. And I really use this as an opportunity, as the new superintendent, to gather from that group what seems to be most pressing and of utmost concern. They're captured in this document here, and I'll take just a couple of minutes, if I may, to highlight them. So there really are four, I was going to use the term buckets, but I'm not sure if that maybe is stealing somebody else's thunder, but the four categories, the first being social-emotional well-being. And so I'll address just very briefly the items that fall under this domain, if you will. The outcomes here, as we think about the work that spans this school year, would be, back to outcomes, sorry, I think you need to escape that. So first off, to really enhance and increase the awareness of ongoing district-wide practices, many of which, as I've come to learn, have indeed begun, as it relates to promoting safe and supportive environments throughout our school system. One of the things that was mentioned this evening, obviously centering around PBIS and as well SEL, that term that captures social-emotional learning, addressing and in an ongoing way, the anti-bullying procedures and responsibilities, and looking at that through an eye of consistency across the district. The understanding seems to be here that we've, again, have a lot of good work that started. There's opportunity and need to continue to grow and expand those programs, and that's the intention here within this specific priority, and we'll move forward to address that. The action steps, you can see, are captured on this slide and outlined a little bit more expansively in the packet. A district-wide subcommittee, the intention here is to form that will further the conversation around identifying priority areas for the upcoming year. We have work to do, this has been mentioned at a previous meeting here, around updating our district's bullying prevention and intervention plan. We do have a plan in place, but it has not been attended to in recent years, and so there are some changes that we need to incorporate into that. So that's certainly one of the steps here that we'll do. Exploring a social-emotional screener to pilot district-wide is something that has been identified as an area that would fall into this umbrella. SEL practices, including a wide variety of things, again, and programs that have been started, a responsive classroom, MARK for bullying reduction as examples here. Anti-bullying education to all staff is work that has begun, and in fact, we've attended to this. This actually came out of a more directive, I guess, if you will, from our coordinated program review, but it's certainly something that work has already tackled this year. And as we look ahead to expand the anti-bullying education for our community at large, that would include our staff, that would include our students, and that would include the wider community. And finally, as this all comes together, provide that information for the Wilmington community on our website. So that's the social and emotional well-being area. Shall I just move through this, and then if there are questions, certainly can address that. The next one is the District Curriculum Accommodation Plan, often referred to as D cap, again, yet one of the many, many acronyms that I think many are well aware of that do loom around us in this work. But the District Curriculum Accommodation Plan is a plan that every district within the Commonwealth should have in place to provide and identify specific accommodations to help support students and their learning. We have work that's begun on the D cap, but work needs to continue around this. The outcome here, just mentioned very briefly, around not only reviewing that D cap plan, but also, it's one thing to have a plan in place, it's quite another to ensure that our staff, as well as our larger community, is aware of the contents of that plan and how it works in complement to the work that takes place in our classrooms throughout the district. And so some other things here that are called out and identified as it relates to this specific priority. Next, thanks, Brian. Action steps related to this D cap specifically. Review the existing plan as it currently stands, as I mentioned. We have some updates there. It's believed to incorporate into that. We also need to be well aware of the training and/or professional development, professional learning, that might need to expand to our staff as a whole to help support the implementation of the D cap. We need to make sure that our entire community is aware of this. This cannot be a plan or a document that just sits on a link on a website or in a binder on a shelf. It has to be a document that helps support practice throughout our district, and so there's an educational component to this as well. And so just very briefly, some of the action steps that are associated with this second priority, the District Curriculum Accommodation Plan. The third, just broadly entitled Teaching and Learning. It does address a few different areas, but specific to the standards and mapping that we believe, and the leadership team believes, needs to take place. Sorry, Dr. Regan, I don't know. I know you're not in control. But this is really, this really focuses a pre-K to 12 effort. We use the term maps, but that's the articulation of the curriculum as it relates to ultimately the outcomes of what it is that we're expecting to take place in each and every classroom. And also to identify and articulate what a curriculum renewal cycle would be within the district. It seems that there is work that we need to attend to as it relates to that. Next, please. Action steps, there are a few here, but very briefly in the interest of time. Dr. Regan will be talking about many of these in the coming weeks. The first, though, K to 5 science program, and we are in a place where we need to pilot and pursue the implementation, I guess, if you will, of a K to 5 science program. So that's one facet of this. Reader's Workshop, as I think members of the committee are aware, is work that has begun, but we have more work to do as it relates to that, and very similarly, ongoing professional development for the Writer's Workshop. Word Study Program has been called out by our leadership at the elementary level for grades three to five, and similarly, at the elementary level, the OWL curriculum. I've forgotten that, and I-
It's actually math, literacy, history, science, all together packaged, that they use pre-K.
Excellent, thank you. Envision's math program is a, relatively speaking, a newer program to the district, and there is ongoing work in terms of the attendance to ensuring that that is implemented to full scale, and curriculum mapping, as was mentioned there. The final piece, and I do apologize, it's not embedded or incorporated here into this presentation, but it has to do with the homework policy and procedures. And in short, as outlined in the document here, it goes without saying that I'm well aware that the district took quite some time last year in reviewing the previous homework policy that was in place and taking steps to move towards the adoption ultimately of a new homework policy. As the committee is aware, and hopefully the community is aware, at least to some degree, this committee, very recently, in the first part of September, took action to adopt and formalize that new policy. So it falls to myself, as your superintendent and working in concert with the leadership team, to now put that plan into place. That will be an endeavor that will span the next number of months. This is very different than some of the other policies that often, I know, come through this body in terms of its very close nexus to the work that takes place within our classrooms. There's an educational component for our staff and for our parents and guardians as it relates to what this new policy means. There's a pedagogical impact as it relates to taking a look at the homework and the types of homework and the amount of homework that we ask students to do. And there's a philosophical aspect as well, related to all of this. So this most certainly is a priority. Please don't, for a minute, think that the positioning of this as the fourth priority is any less important than any of the others, but this is the fourth area that we certainly need to attend to. And as I said to the leadership team when we took stock in formulating this, if we were to do nothing else as related to initiatives or new programs and such, if we attend to and are successful in bringing this to scale, the work that's in these priorities, I think that we can appropriately say that we've made progress in a number of different areas this year. And so, in short, district-wide priorities for 2018 and 19. This is really just intended to be an informational item for the committee, not looking for any specific action on your part, but certainly willing to take any questions or comments that you might have as it relates to this work.
Mrs. Burns?
I just have one. As it relates to the social-emotional goals that you discussed, you may be aware about three, four years ago, our district purchased the clever problem-solving training piece that we were piloting in the district, and we were trying to grow. That was an investment, not only financially, but the time of staff to implement it. I believe it started at the West and was merging into the middle school. I would hope that we might be able to use that investment as a part of that goal, as another tool in the goal to reach the favorable outcomes that we're hoping to as we address the, you know, social-emotional well-being aspect, because I think that's a huge component. And it's a tool that has shown promise when done well. It comes with a lot of work that allows our kids to learn and to navigate that social-emotional piece that they may be going through. So I just wanted to, I'm hoping that it would be utilized.
Do you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but-
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to do a little more learning myself, I think, before I-
And that's, if you need the books, I own them, so.
Yeah.
But if, I mean, it was in our toolbox, if we can just resurrect it, and it just, it would, I think it would actually roll out into all the other areas, you know, it'll, would impact the other goals that we're working on as well, in some capacity. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Any other questions or comments on our district priorities for this school year from the committee?
Let's have a comment on the homework policy and procedures. I see that it's listed that there'll be opportunities to do some parent-student feedback surveys. I'm assuming like as it's, as we're rolling this out. We did collect some surveys prior, during this time, on the homework committee to inform the work, so I wonder if we could just make sure that the leadership team and the teacher staff have access to that as they start to think about how they're going to develop the PD, because I think some of that's going to be helpful in seeing where the new policy came from, and then obviously then to move ahead and do ongoing surveys.
Thank you. If I may, just one more piece that I maybe wasn't very specific on, as it relates to the homework policy. I am aware that there needs to be sort of a formalization or formal announcement, so to speak, as it relates to this new policy. And certainly, we are aware through this venue that this work has been done and the new policy is in place, but we know well that not everyone in the community, I know well that not everyone in the community nor everyone on our staff is aware of that. So I am in the process right now, and will work closely with Dr. Regan to finalize some communication pieces that will go out very shortly to both groups, staff as well as the community, just to sort of articulate where we've been and where we're going as it relates to this, because I know that messaging has not come out yet, so.
Any other questions or comments from committee members? Seeing none, I think we can segue nicely to strategic planning.
Thank you. And I think it is an important segue to make. In your packet, there's a memo that very briefly provides an outline for the current thinking, my current thinking, around moving towards that development of the new strategic plan. As you know, it's one of my goals, my performance goals for the year, and that is to move forward and to establish, not on my own, with the help of many others, but the new strategic plan for the Wilmington Public Schools. And so this is an effort to sort of kickstart this process in terms of where I see the timeline to be and where I think we will go with this. In the memo, you'll see a, first off, a selection of a consultant, and if I may, just to talk very briefly about this. I've had the opportunity and the pleasure to serve in a number of different districts that have been at a place of developing a new strategic plan, or revitalizing, whatever term you might want to use. And I have actually experienced, I've experienced the management and oversight of that process in two different ways. One, tackling that all internally, that is to say with either staff or parent volunteers and/or school committee members. And the other is the aid of a consultant, a third party, you know, that would come in and help aid that process. I think that there are pros and cons to both, but in our particular context here, with myself being new, with Dr. Regan being new, and other members of our team, and some degree of worry around capacity with so many other things that we're also trying to attend to, I would like to propose that we enlist the aid of a consultant to help in the management process. This will be a large group. There will be a lot of information that will be brought together for it. And I think one of the biggest pieces that I think a consultant or a third party would bring is the ability for an outsider to help push the conversations and to really take us through some difficult conversations, if you will, in terms of what are our utmost priorities. And I think that that has great value, you know, as that third party that helps in a partial way guide the process. The timeline that I'm proposing is on the second page of the memo, and I recognize, as I think I said at the outset when I was presenting my goals to you, that I do believe that this is ambitious, but I also believe that it's necessary and essential. And that is to say that by the end of this school year, we need to have a plan in place because we need to know exactly where we're going in the years ahead. And so the timeline outlined here, as you can see, is really the start of this process here in October. With the will of the chair, I'm proposing that she or her will, somebody else in the committee, help with the senior leadership team in exploring possible consultants that could help in this work, that we would go through a process to try and evaluate. There's a couple of different entities or groups out there that we come back with a recommendation in the middle of November. There's one meeting in November, November 14th. And also, who the membership would be to participate and be a part of rolling up the sleeves and being a part of this effort would also come in the middle of November. In the latter part of November, with, after the opportunity to share that proposed committee with this body, the announcement would be sent out to the community at large to seek volunteers. And ultimately, heading into the winter break with our committee in place, the dates for the work solidified, so that when we get back after the winter break, we can begin the work in earnest. So that's the timeline, and I do think it's doable. It will require certainly a big commitment by many, but this is really critical work that we need to get in place to help move our district forward by the end of the year, so.
Any questions or comments from committee members? Mrs. Burns?
I have to agree with you, Dr. Brandt, with regards to your freshman, this is your freshman year. I think we do need to move forward, and I think the most effective way of doing it would be through consulting services. In saying that, though, I do have just a couple of questions, because it is a nuance, and in the previous years that I've served, the strategic plan was always done in-house. But I just had a couple more general questions with regards to if you felt that this would be something every time we'd come up for renewal with our strategic plan that would be hiring a consultant? Are we working, is it your thought, and this might be a premature question, are we working on a three-year or a five-year plan? And just a generality of the costs associated with the consulting services in general.
Yeah, great, all great questions. So first off, no, I would not suggest to you that every time the thought around coming around to renewing a strategic plan would require, would require the aid of a consultant. I think that in this particular context, partially based upon the timeline, that I think is ambitious, and because it's really starting from a fresh, clean slate, if you will. I think it seems that this is a very different time period. In terms of the recommendation for the length of the plan, you know, I certainly think that that would have to unfold as a larger conversation, but I would like to suggest, if I single-handedly had to, that it would be a three-year plan. I think going any farther out is really, probably this would hold true for many businesses, but I certainly think that that's true in education right now. I think a five-year plan is, it's very difficult to do. And the third question, financial, thank you, very important one. So, yeah, so that's a great question. And right now, preliminarily, the costs are ranging, and they're, like anything else, to some degree, more than one might have anticipated. And so when I say ranging, I'm talking about anywhere between $10,000 to $20,000. Now, I will say that part of my initial back and forth with some of these consultants is to get a better sense of if we were to take on more, when I say "we," I mean my leadership team, you know, as part of that, how could we reduce the costs? So it's a balance of sort of in-house plus still the aid of the consultant who's got the wherewithal to help efficiently guide the process. So the final number, as low as we can get it, I recognize, will be critically important, and I'll have more information once I'm back in November.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, seeing none, I think we can move on.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our student representative report, and I'm very pleased to introduce our new student rep for our 2018-2019 year. We have Allison Jordan with us, and Allison, you are a junior.
Yeah, correct.
Well, welcome. We look forward to your reports.
So this past Friday, Jo Wilson and I attended a Northeast Regional Meeting, which we have the opportunity of attending bimonthly. We meet with other delegates around the Northeast area to talk about problem-solving and issues at the regional level. Then they take those issues up to the state level and to the Board of Education. We've recently started work groups to solve problems, and I would like to take them to the school as well. In terms of test-taking, last Saturday, numerous seniors partook in the SATs, and this Saturday, sophomores and juniors will be taking the PSATs. Around the school, an upcoming event is Mr. and Ms. WHS, which is essentially a school spirit competition. And every year, students rave about the event, and it's hosted by the mentor program, which is essential for juniors and seniors, and they help transition freshmen into the high school. It's a great event, and surely something worth attending. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
What is the date for the Mr. and Ms. WHS?
October 17th. I think it starts at 6:30, maybe?
Okay, here at the high school?
Yeah, here.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. We look forward to hearing more. Under old business, we have one item this evening, and that would be our final approval of the School Committee operating protocols. If you've been paying attention, we've had numerous discussions about our operating protocols. Mrs. Bryson and Mr. Ragstale were very kind to volunteer to pull those together for us. Mr. Ragstale cannot be here this evening, but Mrs. Bryson, I'll turn it over to you.
And so I won't review them all. I want to start by just saying thank you to Mr. Ragstale for taking the lead on this initially and really pulling together from all of our notes and chart paper from our meeting over the summer. It is divided into the four categories. We have roles, communication, open meeting law, and executive session, and then meetings. I'm not going to review it all unless there are more questions or comments. Great. But we were hoping that we could all sign it actually here, if that's okay. So I'll send it around if that's all right, and then we'll leave it at the Roman House for Mr. York and Mr. Ragstale.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, and so to formally put this into place, I will ask for a motion to approve the School Committee operating protocols. I've got Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mrs. Burns, all those in favor? That would be unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to be the second one to sign. You won't forget me with the green pen.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Julie, for helping us get this started in the summer. I think it's exciting.
Moving on to new business, we have a fun agenda item, and that is the MASSS Academic Excellence Award. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brandt.
Thank you. This is a great item, and certainly in the spirit of celebration and a reminder of the reason that we are here all and doing this work, and that's the support of the young people of Wilmington. This evening, MASSS, or for those that might not be familiar with that acronym, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, sponsors an award on an annual basis in each Massachusetts public high school at the direction, discretion, I'm sorry, the superintendent's schools. The selection of this award is traditionally made in the fall. Following the selected students to include, this honor will be the opportunity to share more information about our recipients this year. In case you're wondering, the selection criteria for the MASSS Academic Excellence Award includes three years of cumulative average, their rank respectively in class, as well as personal selection by the leadership at the respective school. It is intended to be given to senior high school students who have distinguished themselves, most importantly, in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. And so it is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to- And so, it is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to announce the award recipients this evening. And if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to read a little bit about their background. First, we'll start with Mindy. Mindy Duggan is an outstanding student who strives to serve her school and community. Mindy is known for being conscientious and eager in her studies. Her hard work has earned her a reputation as one of the top-performing students in the class of 2019. In addition to excelling academically, Mindy's passion for helping others has been a hallmark of her high school experience. She is the president of the Best Buddies Club and has volunteered with Special Olympics, Beyond Tops, and Tiny Tots. She's even taken a course in American Sign Language outside of the school day. Mindy's interest in helping others also shines in her work experiences. She works part-time at a daycare and is a caretaker for a young boy with disabilities. And if she still has a spare moment, Mindy also enjoys in her time in the Art Club, Strings, and 9/11 Memorial Committee. She currently serves as the Vice President of the National Honor Society and has been a class officer for several years. Please join me in congratulating Mindy. Our next recipient this evening is Samantha Marzy. Samantha is an exceptional student and an active member of Wilmington High School's class of 2019. She possesses a genuine zeal for learning and her success in some of our most rigorous honors and AP courses that has set her apart from her peers. Her passion for the arts has made her an invaluable presence throughout the creative community at WHS. Samantha can often be found running spotlights or assisting the tech crew for the latest drama production, helping to organize the annual art show, or participating in the Wildcat Band. Her organizational and interpersonal skills, along with the dedication and commitment that she has displayed to the band over the years, has led to her appointment to the multiple roles she holds within this group, such as drum major, big sister for incoming members, band librarian, and the flute section leader. Additionally, Samantha is the treasurer for both the junior class and Sign Language Club, participates in several clubs, at several clubs such as Science Club and Math League, and is a longstanding member of Best Buddies as well. She also enjoys working with children through her job at Wilmington's after-school program, as a volunteer at a summer camp for four-to-eight-year-olds, and is a CCD teacher at her church. With that, please join me in congratulating Samantha.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, pictures. No, go ahead, go ahead. And while they're taking pictures, I'm going to say congratulations to the parents as well. And it's really cool that we have two students that are equally talented that we couldn't choose. That's a pretty special thing. Thank you very much. And of course, you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to...
I think it was a soccer game.
That's okay, I understand, no problem at all. Thank you for being here. Congratulations again. You're welcome. Great, our next item of business tonight is the enrollment report. Dr. Brand, that's also under you.
Thank you very much. In your packet is the enrollment report as of this evening. Thanks to Mr. Rogirio, who is out of district this week. He normally would present this report, but it's my pleasure to be able to do it on his behalf. We are, as I think you know, usually at this time of the year, finalizing the actual enrollment, we refer to that as the October 1st report with the Department of Education. And so, those official numbers, those are the official numbers that really everything ties back to as the year progresses with the Department of Education, capture the October 1st enrollments across the district. The numbers that are in this report are not those official numbers, I wish to just point that out to you, but it's numbers as reported respectively from our schools. So it's not likely to include much fluctuation, but I just want to note that, once those October 1st numbers actually get posted on the Department of Education's website, they might be slightly different, but not significantly. And so, you have that report, this is the, as I've come to understand, this is the report that, at least in recent years, Mr. Rogirio has presented. It is, as you can see, broken down by school and respectively by grade level. It also compares, on the far-right-hand side, we're in fiscal year 19, of course, right now, the comparison to that of fiscal year 18. The change there, very specifically to point out, is capturing the fluctuations from one year to the next, and certainly, as it relates to the one grade level moving on to the next grade level. So, in other words, at the middle school level, you can see the current enrollment in FY19 is 780. It was 836 students in the middle school total last year, so that decline there that you can see over on the far-right-hand side. OOD, out-of-district placement students, that's what that refers to, and that's calculated and separated out, as you can see down the bottom of the report. I'll also draw attention to the last page in the memo, and this came really through what sounds to be a growing interest, and I have to say, I've heard this. I've heard this actually a fair bit in my conversations around the district, around the community thus far, and that is worry, concern about how many students may be leaving the district at the end of eighth grade. A lot of those comments shared with me have been sort of attached to the, I'm not sure if, I don't know if that's accurate, but that's what I might be hearing. Well, this is a very limited slice of data, if you will, from recent years, two, as you can see here, so only the past two years, who I do think that's important to point out. But this, a lot of numbers on here and a lot of information, I suppose, but it really does highlight the fluctuations specifically from students for the last two years, from our enrollment in eighth grade and comparing that same class to the then enrollment in ninth grade. As you can see here, it is indeed accurate to say that at least over the span of the last two years, we are losing a good number of students to a variety of other placements. I don't have any way right now before you to be able to comment on whether or not this resembles data more expansively from other years. Suffice it to say, and I will, even if you weren't to ask me, I intend to dig into that to try and better understand that, and I certainly would be happy to come back to report to you at a future time. But I was surprised to see these numbers, I'll be honest. So with that, any questions? Be happy to answer.
Mr. Talbot?
I mean, I guess, for me, I don't know if loss is the right word to use, like in regards to, like, say, Shawshank Tech, you know, since, you know, kids are going there for a trade, to which, you know, we don't have in-house here because we don't have a trade school. So I don't know if we're really losing them as they're choosing another path other than, you know, possibly going to college or something like that, so...
If I may, great point, and I certainly didn't mean to, I did use the word inappropriately. I didn't mean to, I meant to say specifically the loss of our total enrollment from that class specifically, but you're absolutely right, and certainly, I wouldn't want my comment to suggest that a loss of students to other pathways is at all not very appropriate for their particular pathway. But in terms of sort of the stability of the population, the grade level of the cohort, whatever you wish to refer to it as, there is a significant fluctuation. And you're absolutely right, I mean, there's a, there are reasons for students going in particular directions that are very fitting to their interests and their hopes and such, but just in terms of the overall numbers of our population for that cohort.
Any other questions or comments? I was just going to remark from the October 1st report, in general, it shows me that our numbers are trending down across the board slightly. Not a huge number, but they are trending down, so it appears that our school population as a whole is trending downwards. I understand that those things are cyclical, but I think it's worth mentioning here.
Yes.
Mr. Talbot?
I would think that, with the development that's going on housing-wise, that that's going to change probably pretty dramatically considering the amount of new homes that they've built, and, you know, the desire for a lot of people to send their kids to Wilmington Schools, and that's why they move here. So I would think that it's going to, like you said, it's cyclical, I think it would change pretty quickly.
Great. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Mrs. Bryson? I think it's great that we're going to, you're going to dig into it just a bit more. I'm mostly curious about the reasons to exit to private, I guess more. I see, I agree with Mr. Talbot on the Shawshank Tech piece, and I think there's quite a bit of marketing that's done at that level, where students are seeing a lot of Shawshank Tech, so they actually are like, where am I going to go? And so, but I think the private piece is interesting, and the fact that it's at 25 is interesting to me. I'd love to know, sort of in an exit interview, why they're choosing that. So I think it's exciting to think about as we move forward. Thank you.
Our next item under New Business is the MASSE Resolutions, just as a way of introduction, again with the acronyms, right? MASSE stands for Massachusetts Association of School Committees. That is the body of communities, they are the support organization across the state that supports groups like ours. Every year, they hold an annual meeting. This year, it's going to take place in November down on the Cape. As part of that annual meeting, they discuss what they're going to focus on, you know, and they come up with seven or eight items of areas that they suggest that school committees as a whole consider for their advocacy work. Before us, there is a list of nine items that they are looking for the Wilmington School Committee to support or not, as the case may be. I do want to clarify for the public that may be watching, or for anyone that's new to these, these are not necessarily the items that we locally are going to focus our efforts on this year. This is something that MASSE as a whole will be focusing their work on. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Burns, because I know she's done a lot of work considering these.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryson. Just to expand on that introduction, the purpose of the delegate assembly as well is to drive the agenda for MASSE Board of Directors, not only at the state level, to aid public education in the state, but also at the national level and the federal realm with their lobbyists. And our field directors go out and lobby the government for better support for public funding. So it's a bigger, it's a bigger national front. This sets their agenda for the upcoming year. To start, we're going to start with Resolution One, which was brought forth by the Board of Directors of MASSE. The resolution is rejecting the arming of educators. The rationale is the safest environment would be to provide additional mental health resources and violence prevention programs in public schools. Please ask questions because the rationale may not be totally clear, but this basically is whether or not we should advocate for our educators to carry weapons and/or, we had this discussion earlier this year with Lieutenant Senabog about the pros and cons of that piece. This is to reject it in public schools. I would recommend that we do vote in favor of this resolution.
How's the rest of the committee feeling about Resolution Number One, as Mrs. Burns has recommended?
Do we vote on it?
We can take them individually and vote, or we can just move to vote on it as a whole. I think we're all...
I would like to make a suggestion.
Yeah?
If we could just quickly kind of vote on each resolution, because there are a couple that'll come up that may drive discussion and action at the delegate assembly, that I also wanted to bring forth to the board, if that's okay?
Great, okay. How do we feel about Resolution Number One?
I'm agreeing.
Support it as is?
Support it as is.
Okay, I think that's unanimous on that one.
Resolution Two is small enrolled districts. This doesn't really apply to our district, but this pertains to the smaller rural districts who struggle financially, who don't have the tax fees or the funding to drive a lot of the mandates that the Department of Education has handed down. This, the rationale behind this, therefore, it be resolved that MASSE calls for the creation of a working group to advise the legislature on the best public policy solutions to support small enrolled school districts, and further, that this working group propose modifications to the foundation budget and other elements of the Chapter 70 Financial Assistance Program, designate specific instances where excessive regulation interfere with the ability of school leaders to direct the academic improvement of children, identify and advise on eligibility for state and federal programs to support public education, and find strategies to ameliorate, if I said that correctly, the impact of forces that jeopardizes the growth, stability, and success of these school districts, and further, MASSE opposes legislation or unlegislated regulations that would attempt to undermine the right of any city, town, or regional district to have imposed upon it a mandate to restructure, expand, regionalize, or dissolve its school district without its consent.
That's a mouthful. That's a mouthful. Okay, how are committee members feeling about Resolution Two as presented? Again, it doesn't quite apply to us, but we may want to support our fellow communities. Mrs. Bryson?
I support it as written.
Great.
I as well.
That would be unanimous. Fabulous. Resolution Number Three.
Resolution Number Three was brought, again, by the Board of Directors of MASSE pertaining to the elimination of the Federal Department of Education. Let me read the rationale. Therefore, it be, I'm going to read the whereas because it'll tie it in. The role of the Department of Education is to serve as a fiduciary agent over federal education funding, drive education policy for the country, and protect the rights of all students, and the merger of the two government agencies would diminish the work of the current Education and Labor Department. Therefore, it be resolved that MASSE works with a federal delegation to reject any notion of combining the U.S. Department of Education with other government departments.
Thoughts, comments?
Support as written.
I would be in with that, too.
I concur.
All right, that would be unanimous. Resolution Number Four.
Regional school transportation, brought forth by the MASSE Board of Directors. Therefore, it be resolved to promote greater competition for bus service contracts, the legislature should eliminate MGLC 71-7C and authorize a deeper analysis of the lack of bidders on school transportation contracts. Just a little oversight, this pertains to regional districts and the need, the lack thereof of bidders because of the lack of competitive bid. I checked in with MASSE on this, and it pertains to a partial-funded transportation for regional schools that needs to be fully funded. I know that we don't have any stake yet this, but I would support regional, you know, supporting this resolution to ensure that appropriate funding for regionalized school bus transportations do occur, if I said that correctly?
I think we're all nodding.
Okay.
That would be unanimous.
Sorry.
No, no, that's great.
Tripping over my tongue this time of night.
That's okay. I think we're on to Resolution Number Five, reporting and accountability standards.
Okay. Again, brought forth by the MASSE Board of Directors, therefore, it be resolved that the MASSE works with the legislature and Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to ensure that all students or persons in schools that receive public funds under the authority of the MAS, the MAS Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or a local public school district are held to the same standards and requirements in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So basically, this resolution is any private school that is receiving public funds for students that attend there are held to the same regulations that public schools are. I see this for the... I see this, for the most part, applying mostly to charter schools in this instance. And I would wholeheartedly support this resolution as written.
Mrs. Bryson?
That's fine.
That would be unanimous. Thank you. Resolution number six.
Reproductive health education submitted by the Board of Directors of MASC. Whereas the MASC rejects the federal government's plan to redirect funding from evidence-based programs to prevent teen pregnancy to programs that teach abstinence-only and rhythm-method-based sex education initiatives. Therefore, it be resolved that the MASC supports evidence-based reproductive health curricula. Further, we call upon the U.S. Department of Education and the executive branch to stop their support of abstinence-only education.
Do we have any comments on this one?
Support it.
Mr. Talbot, as the father of a daughter.
I would support it as written.
I very much support it.
Me, too.
Okay. So we'll let you know that resolution seven, I am looking for a discussion.
Okay.
The resolution seven brought forth by the Framingham School Committee on Gender Identity-Inclusive Athletic Participation Policy. The rationale, the at-risk behavior of LGBTQ students, which includes suicidal ideation, is sharply reduced with some basic interventions. With federal laws that are vague with the protections of our vulnerable students, public schools in Massachusetts should take steps to ensure their protection. With guidance from the legislature, LGBTQ students throughout Massachusetts will have better protections and will have reduced adverse behaviors. I ask the board to consider, if you've read the whereas's that this resolution was created for, my concern is twofold. A lot of what this resolution is speaking to, we currently, and most districts, because it's state law, already have it incorporated within their policy as it pertains to discrimination, gender-neutral bathrooms, areas of locker, you know, separate locker rooms if required. I would not support this resolution as written, but for the fact that we have other students who have the same needs, and that by making it just, and I know this wasn't the intent, just making it an LGBTQ aspect, I think is more exclusive than it is inclusive to our population. It is a population I wholeheartedly support, but as we sit here and trying to find the best for all of our students and support all of their emotional, social, medical needs, I would support a resolution specifically surrounding the use of pronouns as it applies. But as I said, most of this is already policy that we have built within our district for all students, LGBTQ included. But I just would request that the board maybe consider supporting, striking out the majority and supporting the aspect as to where it, I don't know if it's going to hold weight, where it speaks to, schools should treat students based on their gender identity, and that there's an aspect about using appropriate pronouns. Now, in saying that, too, I've recently gone through a class in my employer with regards to the new usage of pronouns within that community, and there's about 20 or 30 different pronouns, of which require asking the individual which pronoun they would prefer. So that in itself is a whole nother aspect that I'm not sure how we would negotiate within our schools. I'm sure we could figure, try to figure something out. But I just think that this resolution is more exclusive than it is inclusive, as us boards have to make sure that all of our students, and I think about, as an example, those students who struggle with body image or have body dysmorphic disorder. They, too, have similar needs with regards to separate showering facilities and different aspects like that. I just want to make sure we're inclusive to all of our student body and consider each of their needs is part of it. So I just put that forth to the board for discussion.
Any thoughts, comments? Mrs. Bryson?
So I support it as written, and I would go up to whereas LGBTQ students experience adverse incidents at alarming rates compared to their counterparts. And I think that that's the piece that we know that they are discriminated against at a higher rate. And so I think that this is, the point in bringing this forward is it's necessary in order to highlight that this is not, this is not a choice, that private, neutral restrooms, using their preferred pronouns, embedding sensitivity training in PD, I mean, this is a huge issue for us, especially with the questions that are coming up in the November election, which is essentially eliminating some. So I feel like to protect this population, it's essential that we would approve something like this.
Let me bring up three points to that. This pertains only to the athletic participation policy. The discrimination piece, bullying and harassment pieces are all already incorporated, and they're included in that, in our policies. The other aspect, and forgive me, maybe it's just my perspective, I actually am on both sides of this, in the sense that there, yes, you're absolutely right about the adverse harassment, discrimination that LGBTQ students and population do ensue. But we also have special education, children, too, who also fall under that, who run risks of being victims because of cognitive impairments. And that's when I was thinking that, not that I don't want to support this, it's like, but we have other student bodies, again, that their needs are very, very much similar. It's just a different population of students. And I want to make sure that in this piece, it becomes an inclusive role. And I understand the need to put it up in the forefront, but I guess my question is, we as boards, you know, our role is to ensure to be inclusive of all students. And I'm concerned that with this speaking to only one subgroup of our student population, if that's being exclusive of the other populations that have the similar needs, similar risks, similar discrimination. And that's what I guess I'm putting forth, if it's, you know, it's what I'm putting forth.
Mr. Talbot?
Yeah, I guess my thing is that it sounds like, yeah, I agree with what she's saying, that I don't know if I agree with, you know, once you start classifying people as subgroups and things like that, I think we should just be treating all the kids the same, whether you're boy, girl, or whatever your orientation may be, everybody's equal regardless of that. But my major issue with it is, is that I get concerned about, you know, having different bathrooms and showers and things like that. And if it's something like the American Disabilities Act, which you have to have certain things, if you don't, you get penalized for it. So, you know, how do we build a bathroom for, you know, for the X, you know, you know, people out there that, you know, they have that new designation where you're no longer male or female, you can just use X. And so, you know, do we, you know, how do we carve that out of the school? Or, you know, do we have to do it for each one? And I know you said it was about sports.
These things already exist within our schools through state law.
Okay.
So, because that was a question I had, the financial impact when I read this. But in speaking to Mike Gilbert, actually, today with regards to this specifically, these already exist. We have to meet the needs of each student, whatever their needs are. And regardless of the LGBTQ, they're just as important as special needs, just as important as the freshman who is unsure, social, emotional issues. We, and I think it kind of falls with the work we're laying down for this coming year with the social, emotional piece as well. We need to be able to meet each of our students and their needs in their comfort zone. A lot of this is already in place as policy within our district. This pertains, again, only to the athletic piece, but I can't, I just, kind of can't wrap my head with, if it's within the district, I don't, we should already have things in place for any of our athletes to use if they're not comfortable in group showers or group locker room settings. And adolescence is a very, as we know, a very wobbly time of year with puberty, some are late, some are early. You know, it's those students that I think we have to meet the need of our students individually. And again, not to beat the dead horse, because I promised not to do it tonight. I think, I don't want one subgroup being separate from the rest of the student body, because I think we need to be inclusive and accepted of everyone and their needs. And that was my concerns with regards to how I interpreted this resolution.
No, okay. I was just going to point out, I'm inclined to agree with you, Mrs. Burns, but at the same time, I think I would support this resolution as written because the first two points that they make, the whereas, public school leaders need to provide educational access and maintain safe environments for all, including LGBTQ students, and whereas, all students must be protected from discrimination, harassment, and bullying, and then it continues on. So I think those two first points, where it has the word "all" in there, I feel like it covers everybody.
But can I, but it doesn't, because of how the resolution is pertaining only to the LGBTQ community. But you're right, and then I think that's what I'm wrapping my, I'd like to get your thoughts on, we have it created already, and so that's, we already have that in our policy, we have that in our policy. It's just bringing, I don't know, please, I'm...
Well, I also, in the first one, public school leaders need to provide educational access, maintain safe environments for all, including LGBTQ students. And, I mean, I feel, I would need to look more closely at what's already written. I haven't done that in order to feel even comfortable not supporting. For me, I was like, absolutely support 100%. So if there's a pushback on, we already have this, and we need, we don't want to separate. But I feel like the reason that it's here is because they're not getting what they need. And so it's our role to make sure that they're getting what they need. Because if the law, as it's written, isn't supporting them, then we're not really doing our job.
But it's our role to make sure that each of our, each of our student groups get what they need, too.
Right, but what?
You know, we're not putting forth resolutions to support those subgroups either, you know, the, I don't want to, I don't want to be a one-note speaker, but that's what I think, like I said, I'm afraid that this has been more inclusive, we're not saying LGBTQ students and special education students and students with disabilities and just, they all experience adverse incidents. Even a typical peer, the bullying situation is an adverse experience that we are driving curriculum for. I think we need to be inclusive of, as I said, inclusive of everyone, not only the, including LGBTQ, but also people with disabilities, people whose disabilities aren't physical, and they may be cognitive. I don't want to run the risk, I'd like to at least discuss it in that sense. I mean, I understand, and I want to support what's being driven at the state and national level as well, and that's my personal stake in it. But I just want to make sure, as we look at it towards all of our students within our community, we want, I need to make sure each and every one of them is represented, and I think that's why our policies.
So we have another meeting before we'll discuss this at MASC. Can we get some more information?
Absolutely.
Actually, look deeply at the law before we decide on this?
Absolutely.
Can we table until our next meeting?
So would you like to make a motion that we're tabling?
I'd like to make a motion to table resolution seven, Gender Identity-Inclusive Athletic Participation Policy, until our next meeting, October...
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. Twenty-something.
Do I have a second on that motion? Okay. So Mrs. Burns, you can go up. All right. All those in favor of tabling our discussion on resolution seven, signify by raising your hand. There you go. I think that was unanimous.
Thank you. That was a good discussion.
So let's continue to educate ourselves, and we'll look forward to further discussing the resolution as it's proposed. So resolution number eight, sports wagering.
Again, this was submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Therefore, it be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees requests that, should the General Court enact legislation to legalize wagering on sporting events, the General Court shall commit a portion of the revenues generated from sports wagering to public education. So basically, if they legalize sport betting within the state of Massachusetts, we just want to have a piece of the pie going towards public education funding. So that's basically what that resolution pertains to. I just want to make, just want to clarify that I do not have any, weigh any position or opinion of sports wagering. But if the state's going to, you know, generate that as another source of revenue, I'm all for, for it if we can grab some for public education.
Hey, if New Hampshire can support their public education through selling booze on 93, there you go. Any other thoughts or comments? No. Okay. Are we all in favor of resolution number eight? Sounds good. All right. Resolution number nine, access to information for parents and students who are clients of special education.
This was brought forth, again, by the Board of Directors of MASC. Therefore, it be resolved that MASC urges the legislature to amend state law to require that parents and students be provided with a copy via email or mail of all the assessments that are performed for students and their families, preferred language, at least five days prior to any meeting at which parents and students will review a proposed IEP plan or individual education plan. I actually have some possible additions to this resolution that I would hope Mrs. Newhouse would chime in on as well. Currently, the state law is that parents should receive the assessments no less than 48 hours prior to these meetings. Five days would offer parents to prepare adequately for their meetings. I do have a couple of changes to the language that I would, I would like the board to consider allowing me to add at the delegate assembly. One of which, as it pertains to require the parents and students automatically be provided or similar language, a copy via email or mail of the assessments that are performed for students and their families, preferred language, no less than five days prior to any business days, excuse me, no less than five business days prior to any meeting, excluding any private assessments that parents submit to the district. What that is, is if a parent decides to do a private assessment and then bring forth the results to the school district, that would be the only exclusion of the five-day window, because the parents would have the results and it would be the district. I would also like to add in that only in the creation of a student's initial IEP will the school district also provide the parents and guardians a clearly noted draft proposed copy of the IEP, along with the assessments, no less than five business days prior to the meeting. When an IEP is created, special education is a learning curve for parents. And so often, you want to try to run the most efficient and effective IEP meeting. So with kids who may be starting on an initial IEP, I think having a proposal of what an IEP looks like, along with the assessment, so the parents could review how the results or recommendations of these assessments apply to the goals and benchmarks that they've created, I think would be helpful in generating a good conversation with regards to a solid first IEP for students. And please ask questions.
A couple of questions. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but for the most part, I believe our district has done away with draft IEPs.
Before the IEP.
Before the meeting. Certainly, each, I believe, each provider who has done some testing or has seen the child, you know, they obviously have their own draft notes of what they want to propose. But I believe within the last year, we've been trying to get away from any draft IEPs. And that way, everyone who's coming to the IEP meeting isn't feeling like there's anything predetermined, in that everyone is hopefully more comfortable at the table and has a bigger say. So I don't believe, and I know that's not all districts throughout, but I do feel, and I could be somewhat wrong on this, but from what I've seen in district in the past year is that we have done away with draft IEPs. And what you're getting at the end of your team meeting, so you can walk away with some information, is just a summary, a written... summary, that everyone's, the team chair puts together, the parents sign off on, so the parent does walk away with, this is what was discussed, I can digest it more, I can go back with questions, and then, from all of that, they put together an IEP, and it's sent to the parents, usually within 10 days or so. But for the most part, that draft IEP going, before you go into your IEP meeting, is no longer being used.
I recognize that in my experience as well, but I think what becomes, I'm just, again, with the goal and the intent of trying to have more effective team meetings and more efficient team meetings, that parents who aren't familiar with the strat, with strategies or benchmarks, or how one applies to the other, what it looks like, I just think as a, and I'm saying this as only on the initial IEP, not going forth from that, I know it, it's helpful for me to be able to, you know, in my learning curve, in my process in getting to where I am with advocating for my kids, it would, it would be helpful to, to be able to, be able to join in that conversation, this is why we've just, we've created this benchmark. It's a preliminary, it's a draft, it's a working document, it's not a final document, so that's how I was looking at it, with the hopes, again, to drive better discussion and efficient and effective team meetings. That was, and again, it applies only on the initial piece, not the subsequent IEP meetings, that's...
Mr. Talbot.
I just had my IEP with my son, and they did give us something prior to, that we got in the mails, you know, a thick packet of, you know, to go through, and then, like you said, at the end, they mail you the final, like revised...
Was probably all of your, any testing that was done on him, so it was all the reports from the testing?
No, it wasn't.
It was an actually draft IEP that they...
Yeah, it was, it was, it was just like a initial draft.
I haven't heard of that in the district.
Mrs. Price.
It's my understanding that having any sort of draft of an IEP is not legal, you can't, right, you have to do it at that, because there may not be an IEP.
Exactly.
So, to have a draft would mean that some, a team has decided without the caregivers that there actually is a need for an IEP, and that, right? Which is, I think when Alice Brown-Lagren was here, when we were discussing, some of this came up at some point, and she said, we are no, we are not doing draft IEPs because part of that first meet, for that meeting, or even the annual meetings, is to actually discuss what might come of the IEP, not, here's, so I understand the frustra, and the frustration on parents, part of not knowing what, and getting all the assessments, but not, not knowing what to do with it all, and so, but I think the whole point of the IEP meeting is to discuss whether or not there will be an individualized education program.
And I think my, my thought to that is that, for the, again, the in-house assessments that are done, it's, it's not legal until it's signed, so it's, it's not valid until there's, until it's, the signature is signed off on the IEP. As I said, it would be, a draft is a working copy, it's not a final copy, it's just a working draft, and I just thought, I, we can, we don't have to entertain this, and I certainly don't want to, again, my intent was to help parents understand their child's initial IEP, so that they can be more engaging at their IEP meetings. It's more of a helpful tool, but again, it's not a make or break for me, I just thought it would, might be a helpful tool.
I think what would be, I mean, I, not that we would add in here, but the idea of actually meeting with parents to discuss the assessments and what those assessments look like prior to that first meeting, now that's huge, would be better than providing them with a draft of an IEP that may or may not actually be the right move, but my decision for that child, right? So...
Well, but that's where the discussion at the IEP meeting comes from. The rationality is, okay, we were thinking this, what would the parent, and looking at the assessments and looking what, the preliminary strategies, what, what do you wanna get out of it, what are we missing? That's where that brainstorming occurs. I mean, I can only, I don't wanna speak for anybody else's experience, it would've been helpful when I started the process, I think it actually was, I did get it in that pro, in the process, the, you know, the assessment and the draft IEP, they've since changed it now, but I just, I mean, like again, it's, I don't wanna rock the apple cart, but I just thought it would help parents engage more in a realm that they, it's their first rodeo in, you know what I mean, in creating an IEP effectively. Sometimes they, they haven't had the opportunity to partake in the Basic Rights Workshop. Again, I don't wanna rock, upset the apple cart, I just thought it would be a helpful tool on the initial IEP, the creation, not subsequent IEPs, but the initial creation of an IEP to help give parents that leg up, and maybe foster a better discussion at the IEP meeting amongst the whole team.
Okay, so you guys are talking about the initial first IEP, okay. My son, he's already got an IEP, and so we, what I got was, you know, he's already been five years in, so, okay.
I find it helpful, but I mean, I, I know, I have a better understanding now of the process, but we can always also table this for the next meeting if, if the board feels they want to, unless, I don't wanna discourage a decision if...
I'd be happy if, if the committee would like to provide some additional clarity and as points of reminder for what the law is as it relates to the development of the IEP. It is indeed the case, though, unless something's changed, that that IEP cannot be written ahead of the team meeting. And any, a review process is a different phase of, of that, that process, but that education plans should not be developed ahead of time and outside of the IEP meeting. But with that being said, I'd be happy if you'd like to work with Allison and provide you with a primer, if you will, a review of what the, the laws point to in terms of that, if it's helpful for this item.
Mrs. Newhouse, I saw your hand up. Do you have any...
Yeah, I just feel that, I mean, and this is my belief, is that by providing a draft, it kind of takes out too much of the discussion that needs to happen between parents and the school staff, and I feel that, you know, I get that it's overwhelming for many parents, and, but I'm hopeful that in the discussions, it, you know, in the initial IEP meeting, if there's gonna be an IEP written, you know, there's definitely more time, it's not all happening in that one meeting, and, you know, this is what we've got for you, you know, now sign away, you've got time, and it's not something that has to be done right then and there, so I guess I'm not a proponent of the draft IEP, especially, I think the law doesn't support it as well.
Okay, so I'm hearing that Mrs. Burns has proposed some amendments to the Resolution Number Nine, as presented by the folks at MASC. We've, again, had a pretty good discussion, I think everyone's had an opportunity to kinda share what their thoughts are at this point, so we can move on Mrs. Burns's proposed amendments, or if we wanted to chew on this one a little bit more, we can also move to table Resolution Number Nine, allowing Dr. Brand and perhaps Allison opportunity to share a little bit more information for us to make a more informed discussion. Mrs. Burns, I see your hand up.
I have no, I take no issue with removing the last amendment, because I think it's, unless, and I don't, if the board wants to table it, I'm happy to do with the will of the board, but as, as I said, it's not a make or break, and I, it, it was the discussion that I...
Wanted to have a discussion.
Right, so I, I, no problem with removing that request.
Okay, Mrs. Newhouse.
Without that, the other pieces that it, we, that the district automatically provide assessments, and it be no less than five days, I think...
The results?
Huh?
The results?
Yes, the, yeah, the assess, the results of the assessments. I think for the most part, our district, I know, our district, for the most part, does automatically send this information out already anyways, so I'm great with that language. And then, the five days, I assume it, it will have to change some of the timelines of when things are done, but I do think it would be great to give parents the five days. I know on the other end, if parents do outside evaluations, the district gets 10 days, so I think, you know, the five days is great.
Any further comments or questions? At this point, what is the will of the board? Are we ready to make a motion to accept this resolution as it is proposed by MASC, or do we wanna table it until our next meeting? Mrs. Price.
I'm ready to accept it as we're ready.
We're ready to accept it, okay. Any further discussion? So you're making a motion to accept it? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Talbot. Okay, all those in favor of accepting Resolution Number Nine as proposed at this point?
With or without...
You're removing, you had removed your...
The last one.
Yes.
But there was another one?
There was, there was actually three until...
Actually, can we maybe, can I make a motion to table it, so we can see those, I need to see them, maybe, can we see them written?
Yep.
For the next meeting?
Yes.
And then we can...
Okay, so you're making a motion to table it?
So I'm taking away my other motion. Can I do that?
Go ahead. Is there a second to table? Thank you, Mr. Talbot, there's a second. All those in favor of tabling Resolution Number Nine, thank you very much, that would be unanimous. Okay, did we do it? I think so.
We have one more.
We have one more?
Yes.
Okay, and that is the...
Is this a bylaw change?
The bylaw change.
Which may, may, or may not affect us. Basically, the proposal to the amended bylaws. The board asks to amend the bylaw by changing the July 1st date noted in the text in bold face to no later than June 1st. Rationale moving the submission date of resolutions to June 1st will give adequate time for the resolutions committees to meet and report out. It also aligns with the submission date for nomination of officers. This bylaw basically states that the work, the process of submitting resolutions to the resolution boards, which review them before recommending them to the MASC Board of Directors to get on the agenda, that submission has always been July 1st, but they wanna move it up to June 1st, so the committees have more time to review. I only have one concern that I just wanted to throw out to the board, although this board hasn't ever brought forth any resolutions in my time on the board, if there did come a time when we did, June 1st is a, it's right up the busy time of year for us and for school committees, and for those who volunteer as we do, some get a stipend, some, this is what they do for their communities, they collect a salary, but for us volunteers who also have full-time jobs, I say this, no, respectfully, that I just find that June 1st date to be a little tight for boards that, of our demographics, I guess for the block with better term, and I just wanted to throw that out to the board, because I certainly don't wanna inhibit anything that we might wanna bring forth in the future, because of time constraints.
Proposing that as a motion? Are you proposing that as a motion that we amend, that you amend as our delegate, or offer the amendment at the general meeting?
I would, I, I would offer to vote nay on this, and I certainly will speak out as to why, that would be my recommendation.
As the delegate?
As the delegate.
Any discussion comments? Okay, so you proposed a motion, does anybody have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Talbot, thank you, all those in favor.
Favor of saying no.
Yeah, there we go, thank you. All right, that would be unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, school improvement plans, my apologies to our administrators that are with us this evening. Who's gonna take the floor? Mr. Welch, come on down for the middle school improvement plan.
So, the school improvement plan that I'll be talking about tonight was developed over, over the summer with, with middle school leadership team, and really focusing on some of the prior, priorities of the district as we, as we move through this, this school year, setting us up to be able to move, move forward to, to the future. We'll talk about three goals tonight. First one will be a, a student learning goal. Student learning goal for this year, we're gonna focus on closing the achievement gap, and do, do this by evaluating our, our current multi-tier support system. And the focus will be establish, establish a baseline of what interventions we currently exist, and to explore the deficiencies we might have in the interventions we have. The, the goal to increase the overall student achievement and provide student instruction in the least restrictive environment, focusing on D cap. When, when looking at, at this, this goal, the reality is, is to really look at the interventions we have, and find out how effective they are, and, and really determine what, what are the best interventions we, we can put in place to, to help our students succeed. Really, the focus of this goal is kind of take a step beyond looking at the, say, just the statewide standards of MCAS, and maybe look at the actual achievement within our student, within our school walls, and see how we can show more, more improvement with our students, but also, look at the students that are lagging, and find out what steps we can put in place, what, what interventions can be done to help them, and help them achieve in the future, whether it is our D cap, or other possible interventions that we don't, we don't currently have. Sorry. The, the action steps we'll be working on is to construct a pre-referral flow chart, that'll tie in, down for those, we evaluate our instructional support team, conduct surveys between administration, parents, and to find out what information that people are, are looking for, what, what, I said, what interventions people are looking for, and formalize it, rather than having bits and pieces of information coming in, but actually get, you know, speak to the community and see what, what people are looking for. And then, you know, as, as we're, we're hitting the October season here, but analyze and resource, resource, what challenges we have with our resources, whether it's financially or in scheduling, as we evaluate our schedule, to see what type of either limitations or possibilities our schedule provides. And then, ongoing professional development for, for our staff, that really focuses on utilizing our D cap and utilizing it appropriately, how 504s fit into the, the, the systems we have, and this is the overall multi-tier support system we, we have. And again, by looking at all these action steps, and the goal itself is, is to really, really take a look at the interventions we have, see where we were as, where our students have been struggling in the past, and make sure we're actually focusing on the areas where we see those, where we see those struggles, and, and really shift the focus to be able to set up in the future to lead to more success. So, social-emotional goal, this is really building off of a lot of work that was done last year in the school. And it, the middle school, we, we promote positive behaviors to decrease bullying by establishing a greater core social-emotional support in our schools, classrooms, community. A lot of that work is done throughout, through the MARK program, which we spoke about la, last year, and it was implemented last year, but last year, a lot of the, the focus was on staff training. The student information really took place in the second half of the school year. This, this year with a full school year using the MARK program, we, we will hopefully see much more success. And, and we'll, we'll talk about some actions, the action steps, but, so it's the continued, continued training in MARK, it's, as long as MARK or any other program we have, one of the first action steps we, we have to have is the continued, continued training. The yearly staff turnover, and just reinforcing the skills we have with the staff, that, that is vital, that we continue to, to train our staff, and make sure that we're, we're utilizing and correcting them effectively. And that just ties into the next one with increasing the knowledge and awareness of bullying and cyberbullying. We, at the middle school, we have also, last year, started a, a program, and we'll continue it this year as well with the signs of suicide, and that's, and that program will increase the, the knowledge, the awareness of suicide. And it, that happens in our seventh grade, and we will continue that this year. And we, again, last year, first year, with that program, it's probably a little more condensed, this year we have a whole year to kinda spread it out and really, really folk, expand the focus on that. Educate staff and community on the benefits of students' social-emotional learning in our classrooms, that's a focus point that all of our classes go through, and we, we just continue daily focus on, on that. Increasing the positive school... Increasing the positive school climate through the increased use of PBIS across the teams and grade levels. PBIS is, is a, is, is a very common term here at the school committee meetings and our schools, but to be honest with you, it's probably not something that the middle school has spoken a whole lot about in, in the committee, and I honestly, I think it's time we do that. There are many PBIS techniques being utilized at the middle school, and we need to expand on it. The, the staff that are utilizing those techniques need to be highlighted, promoted, so that, so it, it extends. We have a PBIS team that's been working very hard over the past few years, and to bring it, bring it to the forefront to make sure we continue with it. Getting off track a little bit, I, I, you know, an hour and a half ago, when, when those Wildwood students were up here and, you know, buckets of smiles, kind of put a smile back there on my face, just thinking of how that will, how that is progressing through our district, and now the opportunity at the middle school to see, see it continue. And then, any of the MARK surveys, any of the PBIS techniques, it, it's vital to get student feedback, to, to do some early surveys in the school year about now, and, you know, follow up at the conclusion of the school year to see how the students perceive these techniques we're doing, because if they, if they don't see the, if they don't see success or realize why we're doing it, we're probably doing something wrong, so I think that's very critical information. Excuse me. Professional practice goal, again, last year it was a focus, and it's continued to be a focus this year, is the communication in the middle school. Last year, when I thought about communication, a lot of the, a lot of the focus is on my communication, but communication is more than just myself or the administrative team. Communication happens within the classrooms, teachers to parents. It, it's a, it can't be such a focus on one person or one area. For the whole school to succeed, there are many areas of communication. So, one of, one of the administration team's goals this year is to focus on, on communication and how we are going to communicate better between the staff, between the students, and with the families and the general community. We hope to do, do this by, on administratively. We, we focus on having, having weekly, weekly meetings. We have daily meetings as well, but there is, there is time that we need to, as administration team, focus on, on weekly meetings to communicate, to make sure that as, as a team, we are all on the same page. The district is forming a chain of communication committee, that is something that, a district-wide committee that is going, is, that's being formed, and a piece of it is, I want to make sure the middle school has a voice in that, so we will have an active membership on that committee. Continue work with the success committees, establish stronger school community. Success committee is something that's, that formed last year. It is a, a group of teachers that meet with administration a couple times a month right now, and we, we talk about ongoing issues within the school, perceived issues, or, or, you know, real issues, the things that need to be addressed. It gives, it gives the, the staff of the school another voice to feel comfortable speaking with administration, to make sure we can all work together to resolve any problems that might, might be occurring in the school. This next one, as, as I, as I look at it, I, as I was preparing for time, I, I realized this, this probably should have been written into two, two separate goals. It's, it's a little wordy, so I'm going to, I'm going to talk about it, breaking it down into two, two areas, but focus instructional practices on classroom management that empowers teachers to create systems with their, within their classes that create a more authentic classroom. What we mean by that is to really create, continue the work with our staff that allows the teachers, the resources they know to, they, they need to have, have classes that are not just one-way, that are more free, free, free-flowing back and forth between the teachers and the students to allow for more formative assessments. And then, the, the second piece of that is to, within the classroom, to develop the skills needed to have consequences that develop authority and responsibility with the teachers and the students. And really, the focus of, of that piece is, my, my eyes tend to jump to the word of the consequences, but it really meant to go to responsibility, because the, the real focus of any consequence a, a student should receive, or, and any consequence anyone should receive, is that piece of what does it lead to, and it leads to responsibility and how to make the right, right decisions in the future. So, that action step, as I prepared, I'm like, yeah, it probably needs to be reworded into two sections, but it's really, really set up to establish more communication within the classrooms with, between teachers and students. And then, the second piece is, when, when there is consequences, how is that communicated to the students, and how do the students end up getting something positive out of that, out of that, that, that consequence? Needs, needs, needs to be rewritten there a bit, I would say, yes?
Give me a friend.
Sure.
Give me a friend.
I'm sorry.
I, and, and perhaps it's the way that it's together, but...
Yeah.
I think what trips me up, and I, like yourself, do look at consequences as opposed to responsibility.
Yeah.
And I can't, I keep getting pulled, when I see consequences, I see disciplinary. I mean, you have, I mean, part of learning is making mistakes and learning from those mistakes, and that's how we grow. And I think perhaps it's just the wording and the, the words you use, I, I don't, I see disciplinary as opposed to...
Yeah, I actually, I, I...
You know, it's...
I might agree with you, because as you re, as, as I prepared, and as I was getting ready, I'm like, it really came across harsh, and, and I do think it might be appropriate for, to reword that, break it into two steps, and kind of direct the, the words a little better.
Thank you.
All right, well, speaking of not being harsh, I guess, share, share positive Wilmington Middle School experiences to communicate, community through weekly newsletters, social media, and even, even simple science. That is something that I have been trying to do, and to be honest with you, it's, it's not, it's never hard to find positive experiences, it's sometimes hard to communicate, and that is something that is, is definitely a, a goal of mine this year, to really kind of tear down the walls of the building, and that we, we really promote with everyone about all the good work that, that is being done in, in the school. And be, and honestly, it's beyond just a weekly letter that I sent home, there needs to be other avenues that we, that we really promote what's hap, what our students are doing in our school. And then foster an environment for developing an open discourse between staff and administration to develop strategies for student success. Without that, without that strong communication between the administrative team and, and the staff, the, the students will, 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 will struggle, so we have to make sure as the professionals in the building that we have those correct communication channels in place, and make, make sure that we, we set up the best environment for the students in the school. And then finally, it's providing staff professional development to improve digital communication skills as the middle school transitions to a one-to-one school. Starting with the next school year, we, we're all aware that all of our students will have devices with them, and it, it's important that our staff is able to utilize those, those tools that those devices provide, to again, to share what's happening within the school. Many, many of our staff in the seventh, eighth grade, and even sixth grade are using Google Classroom, that's great, but to say we're using it without providing the professional development that's need to use it appropriately, I think would be inappropriate on my part. So I want to make sure we provide the staff the, the right tools they need to be able to use those devices to actually share the information of what's good, is happening, what tests are coming up, all the, all the vital information that our, our families want to make sure, want to know about what's happening within our school. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Comments or questions from the committee? Mrs. Bryson.
Any other question on the professional practice goal? During the 2018-19 school year, the administration team will work on addressing timely communication deficiencies throughout the entire school commi... I was just wondering, is it just timely communication, or are there deficiencies that you've highlighted?
Um, no, we, I guess, yes, timely communication will address that, but if there are deficiencies, we would address those as well, so.
I guess, have those deficiencies been identified, or are you just, if they come up, I guess, how is that?
Um, as, as they come up...
As they run.
Yes, they're, they're identified. Yes, I guess that... And also, beyond that too, as they come up, to actually mon- monitor them, attract them to make sure they don't continue.
Any other comments or questions on the middle school's school improvement plan? Okay, Mr. Welch, thank you for your presentation. This is helpful. In terms of action, yeah, in terms of action, our recommended motion here, our recommended action to take is to move to approve the Wilmington Middle School Improvement Plan for the 2018-2019 school year. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Bryson. Thank you, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All those in favor? That would be unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Welch. And next, we're going to be hearing from Ms. Peters, our high school principal, as she presents the high school improvement plan.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Peters.
My school impro, our school improvement plan for 18-19 is the third year of our three-year plan that we started in 2015, 2016, and it's just moving through the same goals. We have three overarching goals, increasing student achievement, a comprehensive program of studies, and evaluating progress in achieving proficiency in our academic, social, and civic expectations. We did, when we did develop this plan, we did use the strategic plan objectives of curriculum, instruction, and assessment to guide us with the goals. These goals are pretty broad, so we decided to be more specific and set up goals based on these goals, and there, we have seven of them. So our first goal was to start a interdisciplinary project. When we moved into the new high school, we were assigned classrooms, not by department, but in clusters where we had math, social studies, English, and foreign language teachers all in the same pod, so they worked together in the same teacher planning area. And our goal was to set up some interdisciplinary connections among all the curriculum areas. And we discovered after several months that it was just not going to happen organically, that we needed to move this forward with more planning. So we formed a steering committee for the interdisciplinary work, and that committee's been working for three years now, and they work to provide professional development to the staff, and during the professional development, they develop lesson plans around shared content, around shared skills, and they develop activities around anything that they can see that connects to different curriculum areas. Throughout the, the three years, we've developed a calendar where every month we devote to one particular curriculum area, and the members of the steering committee for this interdisciplinary work actually provide activities that connect to that particular content area. October is Physical Education Month, so we have Physical Education Awareness Week, and we have different curriculum areas relating some of their topics and activities and planning their lessons around physical education. And we will continue to do this work. I know this is the third year of our plan, but this is something that the faculty really enjoys doing. The conversation and the, the meetings that they have around this work is very enjoyable to them, so I think that we would like to continue it. We have not actually implemented any interdisciplinary courses other than the ones that we already had before this, but we do have a project this year where we have a science teacher, physical science teacher, and algebra one teacher teaching the same students, and they are connecting the curriculum there. We are looking into hybrid courses, that requires a lot of professional development, so we have tabled out for this year and maybe planned it in the future. Our second goal is around inclusive practices. We have five particular practices that we've worked on over the last three years that we have introduced to our staff every year as inclusive practices, and the evaluators work with the teachers and evaluate through their observations, they evaluate these practices, which lead to inclusiveness. There are specific practices we look at that come from the elements of the educator evaluation Our next goal is, and we have been working on this, is the senior internship program. The internship program has been around probably for about eight or nine years, and we started with two or three students going on an internship the last quarter of their senior year, and last year, we were up to about eighty students. But with the increased participation, it brings some problems, actually, so we decided that we were going to move forward with 100% participation this year. This was our goal over the three years, so we are working with the study group this year to implement a 100% senior internship program. We have alternatives to student, for students who do not choose to do internships. We do have suggested projects that we would like our students to be involved with, and we are meeting next week for our final meeting with the internship study group to finalize all the details of the handbook that we have prepared for them. Our next goal, we really, actually, we, we just are not going to do this. We have reviewed our schedule, we started this new schedule five years ago, and we review it every year, and we review it by having meetings, we have a scheduling committee as well, and we survey, we survey parents, we survey teachers, and we survey students, and overwhelmingly, they do not want to change the schedule. So, at this time, we're just going to leave the schedule as it is. It's between 84 and 90% of whether it's students, parents, or teachers really want to keep the schedule the way it is, but we will continue to review. Our fifth goal is around reporting out on the level of proficiency our students are achieving with relation to our academic, civil, and social expectations. And this is a goal that we've tried many different ways to, to really, to get, to process. And at the, the end of last year, we decided that in order to really do this well, and to have students really focused on our expectations, that we would like to start a portfolio program, and that is going to take time to plan and implement. So we have a study group this year that's working on this portfolio program, where we will have students that can collect evidence, just as teachers collect evidence for their evaluation, we will have students collecting evidence on the standards from our expectations, on being an effective communicator, on innovative problem-solving, being a community contributor. So we are going to work with our staff this year to process this, to, to actually plan the portfolio program, and we hope to implement it next year. We may not be able to, we may need another year of work on this, but we are planning for that. And our goal six is really to help provide time for teachers to work together. We don't have collaborative time during the school day that's planned, that's scheduled, but we do have our W2 or interdisciplinary block every other day, and there are teachers who, and administrators who will manage students while teachers can get together and... who, and administrators who will manage students while teachers can get together and plan some collaborative work. The collaborative work that they've done so far is in developing common assessments and in looking at student work, and we hope to continue that. And our last goal is to continue our implementation of PBIS. That does look a lot different at the high school than it does at the other levels, but we do have a plan. We do have advisory sessions that we started this year, and we are hoping to develop, through the advisory, we are hoping to develop a culture of caring, as well as a culture of learning at Wilmington High School. So those are our goals.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Any comments or questions from the committee members? Mrs. Burns?
I thought, I think they're very creative, and I thank you for the, the way that you have this laid out. It's just, makes it so much clearer and clarifies so many things. But I had a question regarding the senior internship. I know that there was a certain criteria senior's need to met academic grade-wise in order to be able to participate in these internships. How is that changing with regards to driving 100% participation, or what's, how are, how are you, I'm not sure what the one I'm trying to say?
Well, the handbook of the program of studies does have criteria for this year, and we may have to waive some of the criteria if we have a proposal from a student who doesn't meet the academic piece of the criteria. We may waive that if the proposal is something that we feel is worthwhile for the student to undertake. It's four weeks. We're not starting it at the beginning of fourth quarter. We are getting into fourth quarter for a couple of weeks. We have fourteen days of fourth quarter before the internship actually begins, so it is only the last four weeks of the year that they are with us. So I, I think we can waive the academic piece if that's the problem. Certainly, if students are not passing, they'll stay in school.
How would parents, oh, I shouldn't say parents, because you'd like to see students at that age advocate for themselves. How would, how would a student go about asking for a waiver in, in this piece?
Actually, we have a process that they follow to write a proposal.
I see.
And it has to be approved. They have to have all their teachers sign off as well. The assistant principal, guidance counselors, they sign off as well, so...
So that wouldn't change, then?
Yeah, that doesn't change, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I was just going to add that thank you for your work on this, because I think there's some, some very forward-thinking goals here, a lot of work, and I thank you to you and your staff. And I'm going to say I'm most excited by the internships and the student portfolios, you know, our, our job in public education is to prepare our students for college or careers, and these are perfect opportunities for them. These are real-world experiences that I think will make the difference for our students.
Mr. Talbot?
I have a question about the same. Do we have like a coordinator that, like, like, like a, for lack of words, terms, like a headhunter that can help kids go out and find, you know, companies to work for, or programs to go into, that they can, you know, like an advisor of some sort, or something like that?
Well, Mr. Phillips is part of the business partnership, and he does, through them, he does ask for opportunities for internships. So we do have a list of places, and a list of internships that are available. And, you know, we also have projects that we expect some students would rather do than go on an internship, and we have suggested projects as well. There's no one that's actually advising yet. This is new, the 100%, we might need someone to do that at some point.
Any other questions or comments from committee members?
No. Okay, so our recommended action here is a motion to approve the Wilmington High School School Improvement Plan for the 2018-2019 school year.
I'd like to offer that. Mrs. Newhouse, thank you. Seconded, Mrs. Bryson, thank you. All those in favor? That would be unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. Peters.
Thank you. Middle school and high school leadership teams, I especially would like to say thank you, because I've, I've sat through numerous school improvement plan discussions over the years, and I've always been looking for a little bit more. You know, they, they were always very formulaic and cookie cutter, and after you've sat through six of them, six years, you're looking for a little bit more, a little more creativity. So thank you very much. Clearly, the bar has been set high for our other schools. Great. Okay, public comment? No. All righty. Other reports under subcommittee reports. Mrs. Burns, are you able to provide an update for us on the auditorium naming?
Yes, yes. I'm happy to report that the committee, after consulting with Mrs. Benton's family for availability, has decided that Sunday, February tenth, at 2:00 p.m., will be the dedication event for the Joanne Benton Auditorium here at the high school. It is open to the public, although we will, we are currently working on a formal guest list for certain special guests to, to be there. Also, happy to report that Mrs. Peters found a student who is going to do the artwork for us, which will, you'll see throughout our invitations and programs, so we're looking forward to seeing the, the first draft of that come through. So we're making progress. Oh, and I should say, the sign agent has been signed off on, and we're, that will be in process and production shortly as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other subcommittee reports? No, seen none. Correspondents?
Yes, I, I have one note, which came from Mrs. Jackie Raffey, Assistant to Assistant Superintendent Paul Ruggiero. It reads, "Dear members of the Wilmington School Committee, thank you very much for the lovely floral arrangement you sent to me upon the passing of my mother, and your very kind expressions of sympathy. I appreciate your thoughtfulness, and I am grateful for your kind support. Thank you again, sincerely, Jackie Raffey."
Great, and the flowers were lovely. She did send a picture, so they were lovely. Thank you. Okay, we have received communication from the Wilmington Teachers Association on behalf of our Educational Assistant Bargaining Unit, that it is time to start the bargaining process for a successor agreement. So they did send us the formal letter of notification. They have asked us to work with them to determine a bargaining schedule, so we need a couple of our members to serve on the negotiation team on behalf of the school committee. Is anybody interested or able to participate?
What's the timing on it usually? Do we have a sense?
Not as of yet. In terms of total commitment, do you mean, or?
In terms of what time of day, usually? That seems to be, for a lot of us, that's usually the issue.
I'm not certain. I can only speak to the recent efforts, it probably would be later afternoon, mid to late afternoon, but...
It's typically when they've been?
Yeah.
Anybody able to?
One of my children has, and it's, so I'm not sure I should participate.
Okay. Mrs. Bryson?
Okay, thank you. It probably would be helpful. I know that the afternoons are hard for me personally.
If I may, I can certainly check with, with Paul to see what that flexibility might look like, and if you'd like me to, or you can to reach out to the members that aren't here, maybe one of them could speak to.
That could be a possibility, too. Okay, great. Okay. So we've reached the point in our evening where we have one more agenda item, and that's a motion to adjourn. Would anybody like to offer that? Mrs. Newhouse, I saw your hand first. Mr. Talbot, you're offering the second. All those in favor of moving to adjourn? Thank you, that would be unanimous. Thank you all, have a good night.